Okay, so it is nine thirty, so I think we will get started if that's okay, Madam Clerk.
Of course.
All right, so it is, excuse me, my voice all of a sudden is cracking up. It is June tenth, twenty twenty-one, I want to welcome everyone to County Council. Spring has arrived, and in celebration of spring, I brought in this morning some peonies. I don't know if you can see them over my shoulder, I'm sure many of you also have your gardens blooming, and particularly the peonies, which I just love. My backyard is fragrant and bright, and I just love to see the peonies and others. Okay, so I will call this meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We have all council members in attendance with the exception of Councillors Potter and Boddy. I will notify you when they join the meeting.
Thank you very much, and we will get started then. Next on the item, next item on the agenda, excuse me, is the land acknowledgement. So I will say that we acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Anni-Ishinabek, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani, the Wendat, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples, on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Meti and Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land with Andes waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. And those words are particularly important in light of the events that have taken place recently in London, I'm sure that everyone is giving some thought to what's happening, happening there, and indeed, happening throughout our country. Declaration of Interest, item number four. Is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, and Madam Clerk, I'll check my second screen, I do not see anyone. If one does arise, I would ask you to declare it at the time that you discover it during the course of the meeting. That's so. Item number five is adoption of the minutes, and we, five A, is the County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes, which were dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. It has been moved by Councillor Keveney and seconded by Councillor Columbus. Is there any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, I will then call the question, is there anyone opposed to adoption of those minutes? And so I'll say that that is carried, thank you very much. Item number six, six A is the Board of Health Minutes. They're dated April twenty-third, and Board of Health Special Unit, Special Meeting Minutes dated April twenty-eighth and May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and the Board of Health Executive Meeting Minutes dated May seventh and May tenth, twenty twenty-one. Board of Health has been busy, as you can imagine. Item number six is moved by Councillor Patterson and seconded by Councillor O'Leary. Dr. Era is present, so perhaps I will have Dr. Era present an update for us.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, the highlight of the minutes and the updates are related to two fronts, COVID and the opiate crisis. For COVID, we continue, and until this day, to have excellent control over the pandemic. In Gray Bruce, the number of outbreaks in regulated settings, hospital, long-term care, retirement home, childcare are zero. There is one outbreak related to a roaming home where there is a challenge that has been met with success from the different partners in Gray Bruce. The challenge is related to the fact that thirty-five residents of this roaming home use drugs, and they have specific needs to maintain control if there is an outbreak, and there has been an outbreak with eleven cases. There has not been an increase in numbers since the declaration of outbreak. And it's worth mentioning that the partners around the table in Gray Bruce came together to address the situation. The management of the outbreak case and management stays with public health, and we take the lead on it. The challenge of isolation brings the need to provide life necessity, whether it's food or ensuring no withdrawal from drug use, and the different partners did that. United Way provided food, the municipalities provided support on many fronts, whether offering potential housing if we needed to isolate somebody outside or not. And EMS has been the lead on the ground, I cannot repeat it enough. Gray EMS and Bruce EMS in general, in the pandemic, have contributed. In this case, they have been the lead. And RAM, hospitals, the mental health aspect of it provided by different partners, and naloxone and methadone treatment are other aspects of it. Again, it really highlights the success of our ability in Gray Bruce to collaborate and mobilize, public health mobilize the partners to address certain need. The vaccine front, we have reached one hundred eleven thousand doses in Gray Bruce, and that is consistent with the provincial direction, and we're getting our fair share. And we have the capacity to proceed further and faster if need be. Reopening plans are being reviewed by our staff for different sectors, and we're, I am confident we can provide the same level of safety that we provided last year with the reopening. And the other update on the vaccine front is completing the fire and police vaccination last week, second dose, along with the healthcare workers. And we considered the first responders, police and fire, to be part of the healthcare workers category, since they attend to calls, and that was completed last week. The, this weekend, would highlight another success for Gray Bruce. Peel Region, with the help of Bruce Power, built a hub with a capacity of nine thousand vaccines per day. And we had deployed a couple staff to help in the management change and sharing the knowledge of operating the hub. Peel recently called on us to send the entire team for one day to ensure that they can see the process and we can demonstrate large-scale operation. So that would be on Saturday, about twenty-five of our team will be there, and I'm sure it's going to be a success in providing that knowledge to Peel and the change management required with such operation. And one final update, Mr. Warden and Council, is related to the opiate crisis that all communities in Ontario has been dealing with. And if you recall from three months ago, our board passed a motion or direction to staff, to myself, to draft a resolution to Alpha. Alpha is the Association of Public Health Agencies in Ontario, and they had, we had our Alpha meeting this past Tuesday where this resolution passed, and the resolution, in essence, calls on all agencies and level of government in Ontario to capitalize on the success that public health has been as a leader in mobilizing partners to address the COVID crisis or the COVID pandemic and channel and use the same momentum to address the opiate crisis in Ontario. And the fact that the resolution has passed, adopted by Alpha, will definitely have impact on the strategic direction of public health and the different agencies that deal with opiate going forward. So I look forward to implementation of that resolution in Gray Bruce and the result of it across Ontario as well. That's my update, Mr. Warden, open to questions as always.
Thank you very much, Dr. Era. I got to say that the Peel partnership, bravo on that, that's really exciting to hear that we're sending an entire team down to Peel and that we'll be able to demonstrate this hub model in full force. That's awesome, and it's also a sign of things that we've been doing throughout the pandemic with respect to working with other units. I know that our paramedics were down in Windsor, and we have worked with other units in terms of sharing resources and whatnot, so we're all in this together, this is really exciting. Sue, is there anything that you wanted to add? I should say, Councillor Patterson.
That's fine. Yes, I do, I have three items I'd like to highlight. So, good morning, Warden Hicks and County Councillors. Over the past couple of months, the Board of Health has received letters of support from various municipalities, and I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to those municipalities for taking the time to share that support with the board, it is appreciated. Next is, the twenty twenty-one budget has been approved by our board, and the budget reflects the temporary shift to respond to the COVID nineteen pandemic while distributing and administering the various vaccines to the population of Gray and Bruce counties. The Ministry of Health has indicated that one-time extraordinary funding will be available to cover excess costs incurred related to the COVID nineteen response. The portion that each county is to contribute has remained stable from the previous year, and this is due to the provincial government's mitigation funding for twenty twenty-one, covering the change in the formula, you remember it was seventy-five, twenty-five percent, which is now seventy, thirty percent. And also, due to the Ministry of Health's one-hundred percent funding of additional funding needs incurred because of the response to the pandemic. In other words, Gray and Bruce Counties will be contributing the same amount as twenty twenty, which is the number that was included in our Gray County budget. And as Dr. Era referred to, on June eighth, at the annual conference for public health agencies, I can say Dr. Theresa Tam, Canada's Chief Public Health Officer, gave a shout-out to Dr. Era and the staff of the Gray Bruce Health Unit on and commented on the progressive and innovative model of the Hockey Hub. So that was pretty nice to hear from Dr. Tam. Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. I will now open it up for questions from anyone else who may have any questions, Council.
Councillor Desai and Councillor Potter.
Thank you, Councillor Desai, go right ahead.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, good morning, members of Council. Dr. Era, thank you for the report. Just a quick question, if you could provide clarity on who can register for the second dose at this point. I've had some trouble myself trying to decipher the communications that has come out, and, I mean, on social media, it's been a wide range of people that have said, oh, well, I booked my second dose. So if you could provide some clarity on that. And second is a statement, just wanting to congratulate the team with regards to the adoption of the Hockey Hub in the Peel Region.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The second dose is available for age groups, for healthcare workers, definitely, and that was provided in Gray Bruce. For age groups, it was approved for the eighty-plus, and there was a plan to be approved for seventy-five plus. I will have to check our website, and I can email right after if need be, just because these numbers change quite frequently, and I don't want to mention the exact age if I'm not one-hundred percent sure, if that's all right with the Council.
First thing, all right?
Yep, thank you.
Anything else, Councillor Desai?
No, thank you, my word next.
Councillor Potter.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late, but it's timely because I just came back from getting my second dose, because I am immunocompromised, so I'm now fully vaccinated. And the Hockey Hub and the Julie MacArthur Centre in Owen Sound is extremely efficient. It's really something to watch, something to be part of. I wondered if we are going to see even more vaccines coming. Is the flow going to start moving along a little more easily? And I also suggest that anybody that has questions, call the health unit, I did, and they were extremely helpful, and I were able to help me make my booking for my second dose too. So, but I just wondered how the vaccine supply is coming and whether we are expecting to see more in the near future.
Dr. Era?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have seen an increase in the supply of vaccine after mid-May, after increasing the doses to one-hundred percent of our allocation. The first part of May, we were supported or receiving around fifty percent of our capacity, the rest of it going to the hotspots. So since then, we have received the full capacity, around eight thousand doses, and we continue to hear that there will be more vaccines coming forward, and the plan is to have increase in that as well.
Thank you very much, is that it, Councillor Potter?
Yes, that's good, thank you.
I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Councillor Keveney. And I will just let you know, Mr. Warden, that all members of Council are here now, Councillor Boddy has joined us as well.
Thank you very much. On my screen, my very, very top row must be the people who have their hands up, because I'm not seeing the very top of the top row, so that's why I'm missing those hands. But Councillor Keveney, you're next, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. Dr. Era, I wondered if I may ask for your opinion and recommendations on mixing second doses? Do you suggest that it's okay to do so, because we hear a lot of mixed discussion on that front in the media, and I'm just wondering, in particular, for those of us who did receive AstraZeneca the first time around, what your thoughts are for our second doses?
So, NACI, the National Advisory on Immunization in Canada, made, issued a statement that mixing vaccines is safe for the same type of vaccines or the mRNA vaccines. We still wait for the provincial direction on that, and my understanding, in the near future, in the imminent future, before the end of the month, definitely, we will receive direction that it will be allowed to mix vaccines in Ontario. At this point, it's not recommended by the province. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, the age group is seventy-plus in Ontario for a second dose.
Good, thank you for that clarification. Councillor Keveney, anything else?
No, not at this time, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much, I believe that is now it for hands.
That's correct.
If that's the case, then I will thank you very much, Dr. Era, for that update, and to Councillor Patterson as well. And I think it's time to call the question on the motion, is there anyone opposed to approval of that motion? And I will say that is carried, thank you very much, that was item six. We're now on to item seven, good news and celebration, and I'm looking for hands. Councillor Robinson, I see you up in that first position, I don't see your hand, but I'm assuming there's a hand there. Go ahead, Councillor Robinson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. So I'm very pleased this morning to share with County Council that the provincial government yesterday announced that natural gas expansion will take place in Newstat. Approximately two hundred and nineteen homes and businesses will be able to connect for the first time as a result of this natural gas expansion program. Certainly, good news and celebration fits into this announcement, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Councillor Robinson, next, I believe, is Councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, good morning, County Council. Just wanted to congratulate and acknowledge a local athlete from the township of Chatsworth. Bailey Hooper was part of a five-person rowing team at a recent regatta in Italy, and they won the gold medal, which qualified them for the Paralympic Games in Tokyo this summer. So certainly, congratulations, and we'll be rooting for Bailey in Tokyo this summer, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mackey, and I apologize, Councillor Robinson, I went straight to Councillor Mackey without saying that I also was quite excited to hear about that news. Expansion of natural gas is so important for many, many people. There'll be a lot of excitement around that project, for sure. Next is Councillor Soever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Couple of things, on July third, there's going to be the second Drive-Thru Lobster Fest at our Beaver Valley Community Centre. So this is a drive-through event, you can drive through and pick up your lobster dinner. It includes lobster, barbecue chicken, a fresh baked roll, baked potato, salad, and dessert. So it's more than one meal. And the, there's also lobster tools available to purchase. There's a well, health and wellness beauty pack that was donated, and we're selling those for twenty-five dollars, it's a hundred-dollar value of beauty products. And you can also order wine to take out. And so that's new this year, and that will support our local wineries here. The, so that's on July the third, and all the proceeds go to the Grants and Donations Committee here in the town of the Blue Mountains. So the, except for the wine is going, that's organized by the Legion. So all the proceeds of that will be going to the Legion, of course, we know the Legion has not been able to have its normal revenue from sales of beverages, so we hope this will help them catch up in that regard. We also have Hindle's Hardware, for those of you who have not been to Clarksburg, it's well worth the visit, it's their fiftieth anniversary in business. It's an old-style hardware store. If there's something you can't find, if something breaks in your house and there's something you can't find, all you have to do is go to Hindle's, and Mr. Hindle will find it for you. There's a rumor that he has one of everything that's ever been made. To attest to that fact, a few years ago, when my dryer, the springs were going on it, so I guess it was the washing machine, the springs were going, and the thing was jumping all over the floor. I just took one of those springs, and I said, you have anything that can match this? So he went downstairs, came out with a huge box of assorted springs, and I was set to go until I could purchase a new one. So Hindle's is truly a place to visit, because it is, you know, has one of everything. It's a very old-style hardware store, and so it's their fiftieth anniversary in business. The Hindle's bought it fifty years ago, so that is an event, a great event, and he's been serving our community. Where the big-box stores, you go there and they can't find stuff, then you, first, you should go to Hindle's, because it does, you can find, if you can't find it there, then you're in trouble. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councillor Soever, and you've done a great job promoting Hindle's. And I got to tell you, I love old, old-style hardware stores, I could spend hours in them because I love tinkering with all those little gadgets. So I'll have to make a point of visiting when I have, when the time is right, when I have a chance. I was also thinking I could use that health and beauty aid package that you were talking about. But anyways, I digress. Next is Councillor Columbus.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. This is an award, and I'm going to show you a little bit of bragging here, if everybody can see this. We may have heard this before, because the award was presented in June from the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators to our staff for the Willis Award for Innovation. It was the twenty twenty-one recipient of this award for those communities under twenty thousand. And the award is for the installation of a program, Report a Concern over our Website Portal, which monitors and tracks customers' concerns and actions that we need to attend to. So very, very proud of our staff for what they have done and for this award, so thank you for indulgence.
Thank you for that, Councillor Columbus, and congratulations indeed to the staff at Neeford. Next is Councillor Boddy.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As we know, June twenty-first is always a fun day, because it's the longest day of the year, the northern solstice, or summer solstice for us. It is also National Indigenous Day, and on that day, the City of Owen Sound will be dedicating the name Name Gichi, Name Wickwiddig. Oh, how can I blow this at this moment? I'll come back to it, the naming of the bridge of Tenth Street will be doing a celebration with that dedication at the bridge, and very much looking forward to it. Some of the details have not been wrapped in totally yet because of, you know, as we're getting acclimatized to the COVID rules, but it's something that we look forward to. Of course, I think it was twenty fifteen that the report, a lot of it was based on residential schools, came up with ninety-four recommendations for reconciliation. And of course, we all know the news of the last ten or twelve or fifteen days from Kamloops, and that struck a chord, I think, with everyone in Canada. So we're really looking forward to the naming of the bridge on June twenty-first, and if you're around, we hope you can come out, join us, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Boddy, and I share, I have sympathy for you with respect to the pronunciation of the names, because I struggle with Anni-Ishinabek and the Howden Ashani, but I'm practicing.
Gichi Name Wickwiddong, there we go.
There you go, Gichi Name Wickwiddong. Well, I'll have to work on that one. Next, Councillor Desai.
Thank you, thank you, Warden Hicks. Unfortunately, what I'm about to say is, there's neither good news nor celebration, but it is something, in my opinion, that perhaps should be said in some form. Since our last meeting date, which was May twenty-seventh, there has been some news that has dominated the columns and areas. From the two hundred and fifteen lives which were cut short due to what can only be described as attempted cultural genocide, to four lives being ended by blind-hated for, of another person's culture, to an orphan nine-year-old. It's hard to say, I find it hard to say anything when these things happen. Gandhi once said, "Recall the face of the poorest and weakest man you have seen, and ask yourself if this step that you contemplate is going to be any use to him." Which leads me to ask, what can I say today that can improve the times tomorrow? What can I do today to make a better tomorrow? These questions, quite frankly, lead me to think twice before saying anything on either of these matters. And perhaps that is wrong in itself. After all, someone did say, "Silence in the face of injustice is complicity with the oppressor." I do want to say, though, that I remain proud to be a Canadian. I'm an immigrant, I am a Canadian, those are not mutually exclusive. I'm proud of the advancements that Canada and Canadians have made to better society and making the world a better place. I also recognize that we still have areas where we need to make progress. I recognize that we need to do a better job speaking for the underserved and the underrepresented, and I hope to do better in those areas, because if I can be better myself, my community will be better for it. And if my community is better, then my country will be better for it. And if my country is better, then the world that we leave for the generation tomorrow will be better for it. I will conclude by saying that every child matters. From the two hundred and fifteen, who are but the tip of the iceberg, to the fifteen-year-old who lost her life to hate, and the nine-year-old who lost his family to a despicable act. Thank you for your indulgence, Warden Hicks.
Thank you very much, Councillor Desai, for your very thoughtful words. Thank you. Madam Cao, is that, is your hand up?
Yes, it is.
It was, okay, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Warden. The staff have a number of things that they'd like to celebrate with you this morning, and I'll start off by calling on Kevin. Um, the the staff have a number of things that uh they'd like to uh celebrate with you this morning, and I'll start off by uh calling on Kevin McNabb and. The results of their recent uh paramedic week. Kevin?
Morning, council. Uh, just wanted to give you some uh good news in regards to our paramedic week this year that we. Celebrated from May twenty-third to twenty-ninth. We focused on the great work the paramedics do every day, but also some of the work. That they've done through the pandemic and our our tagline was hard times don't last, but strong teams do. And uh part of this was to hold a virtual food drive. It's something we've never done before. Usually, we would go to two or three sites during that week with our ambulance and fill it up. Uh, this year was held virtually uh through donations at uh. Four uh different grocery stores, uh Mifred Independent, Sares Owen Sound. Grants and Hanover and Thornbury Food Land. And uh happy to report that uh the you raised seven thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars over that period of time. And uh just to give you a running poll, uh Rick Trombley started this back, one of our paramedics, in two thousand and ten. And uh Colin kind of grabbed the torch in two thousand and eighteen. And uh since that time, they've uh been able to uh get over eighty thousand pounds of food. So uh congratulations to uh them and and all the paramedics that uh take part in this.
Thanks so much, Kevin, and congratulations. I I really think it speaks to the um. Support that you and and your team have uh in the, with the public. Um, next, I'd like to go to Jody McKeckren from our IT department, who has something to celebrate. Jody?
Thank you. Um, at the recent uh annual conference for the Municipal Information Systems Association uh of Ontario, we were awarded. Um, uh, an award for uh excellence in municipal systems for our work with Municipal Five-One-One. Um, so Municipal Five-One-One, it's I, it's been discussed at the council table before, but. It's a web-based GIS application for managing and communicating issues on our road network. And the award recognizes what we've done with this that goes above and beyond a straightforward implementation. We've really been leaders. Um, as a, as a consumer, as a user of this software. Um, and we've done uh some some fairly progressive things with it. Um, we've led an implementation at the county that includes all of the nine-member municipalities, both through Public Works and Fire. Um, we have great adoption within our own transportation. And that data, uh I think one of the most significant things uh is feeding into Interdev's Cadlink program. So now if there's any issues on the road like construction or an emergency closure, that data is available to paramedics. Um, yeah, live in their trucks, and they can respond accordingly, whether that's uh. Whether that's adjusting their dispatch or just being aware of uh more issues on the ground. Um, furthermore, paramedics is leading a. An integration with more private content for their responses, including uh issues around specific locations or uh things like the the locations of our. Um, public access defibrillators. We've also uh been the first of the client for this software to. Um, do integration integrations with our in-house GIS, and we've openly shared that with other municipalities if they're interested. And um. I, you know, I would just like to to thank the people who work on it. If it wasn't for member municipalities and uh and Pat's team feeding data into this. Um, and and even a lot of our neighbors, this, the software now services um half of the municipalities in Ontario. Um, then we certainly wouldn't see that benefit on the paramedics and the emergency response side. Um, and and Joel Meyer, who was our GIS specialist up until this winter and is left for Waterloo, was uh integral in. In uh leading a lot of the work that we've done, and it's now handed off to Sean and Matthew Wortman, who are. Doing uh great work, and I'd also like to thank uh Doug Alport, who's our vendor on this. He's absolutely fantastic to work with and and he provides great service and a great product.
Thanks so much, Jody, and yes, I totally kudos to everyone who's involved in this, and and. I want to recognize you too for joining the Board of MISA. I think uh that kind of contribution back to uh to your profession and your sector is so important, so thank you for doing that. Uh, Mister Warden, if I may, the last thing I'd like to speak to this morning is. To provide some recognition and and celebration. Of someone who did so much for Gray County and Gray Roots, and I'm speaking of um. Mister Bob Alexander. Um, Bob was born and raised in Owen Sound. But he was a dedicated museum volunteer for over thirty years, including several terms as the Chair of the Gray Roots Museum Board. His greatest contributions lay with the creation, development and interpretation of the Blue Water Garage. He was equally passionate and supportive of Gray Roots' efforts to honor local veterans, as he himself was a proud son of. First World War veteran, a Korean War veteran himself, and a member of the Owen Sound Legion. Mister Alexander was honored with a twenty-fifteen Lieutenant Governor's Ontario Heritage Award for Lifetime Achievement. As well as an Owen Sound Cultural Award for Volunteer of the Year, and many other richly deserved accolades over his lifetime. Um, he's also uh our Sarah Johnson, our planner Sarah Johnson's grandpa, so. Um, I just wanted to say that he will be missed. He made a huge contribution. He was wonderful with all of the students. Who came to Gray Roots to help them to learn and understand their history. And Gray Roots and all of Gray County have benefited immensely from Bob's generosity of spirit. Unwavering dedication and profound knowledge. We are all better for having known him, and the sadness we feel at his loss is only a measure of his greatness. So, thank you to Mister Alexander. That's everything, Mister Warden. Thanks.
Very kind words, uh. Kim, and we certainly appreciate that kind of uh volunteerism, and you don't see uh much of that, do you? Okay, um, I can't tell from my list, Madam uh Clerk, is there anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, I saw councillor Hutchison pop up in my first row, so I wondered if uh he had something to say, but he doesn't. All right, so that's it for good news and celebrations. Thank you uh very much. Um, we will then turn to item number eight, which is adjournment. It's been moved by councillor Millen and seconded by councillor Burley that we adjourn. Um, I'm gathering no one will be opposed to that, will you? Anyone opposed? Right. So we'll take a second to switch uh gears and move over to committee of the whole.